Kind of starting up here. And I feel strange counting myself in however, but I would like to say tonight, welcome. All you know, all planning board members and applicants to the August 27th Ashland Planning Board Meeting being held on Zoom tonight due to the governor's orders due to the COVID-19. Because tonight is being held on Zoom and if you would like to participate on a phone, I do not have internet access. I would ask you please to dial in via phone at 1-646-558-8656 as the meeting ID is 88562040992 and the password is 664539. I also do want to note tonight that this meeting is not being aired live on WACA TV. This is a recording of the Ashland Planning Board Meeting which will be aired on WACA at another time. So as that is the introduction, I would like to move to our first agenda item, which would be the discussion of the current status of the construction project at 128 Main Street. At the last Planning Board Meeting, the Planning Board met with the applicant's engineer in represented by Phil Jack. At the Planning Board Meeting, we did talk about putting together a list of items that the Planning Board looked to be changed. And then the applicant did resubmit renderings of all three sides of the building, the left, the front and the right, excuse me, the left, the center and the right side renderings of the buildings this past Tuesday. And I thank you, the architect Dan, for submitting those. And at this point, I do, I'm going to hand it over to Phil and Dan. Phil and Dan, can you please go through the changes that were made after the last Planning Board Meeting? I also do want to note that the Planning Board did receive all the information and the information was posted on the Ashland Town Hall website. Furthermore, the applicant has provided, did provide the planning office with samples of the roof shingles. I know the Planning Board did receive pictures via email and two of the current Planning Board Members on tonight's call were able to view those in person at Town Hall. So at this point, if anybody has anything else to add, I will hand it over to Phil and Dan to walk us through the changes that were made at this current time.
Peter. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you all got a chance to look at the most recent renderings and the samples of the roof shingles. And so I'm just going to hand it over to Dan so he can just run through the changes since the last meeting.
Yeah, sounds good.
Dan, would you like to share your screen?
Yeah.
Should be able to now.
Okay. Are you all able to see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I just want to run through, you know, the items we talked about previously. So I'll just touch on those real quick. So we addressed the roof shingle color, the dormer roof style, which is the hip style roof, the front balcony railings to match the side railings. Address the paneling around the windows, above and below the windows and then the general trim windows. And then, now I just want to touch on the lists you guys are looking at. So we talked about the roof material. So in these updated renderings, we now have the metal roofs on the dormer roofs there. The, again, the side dormer roof style is the hip roof with the metal. So another item was the trim and paneling towards the rear of the building. So we've pretty much gone back to the original approved set. So there's no plans for paneling anywhere. And we've also with that addressed the trim around all the windows. So we have a more cohesive look to the building and it fits together well. And then the other item was the commercial front door. If I just go to the front rendering here. So we want to achieve a little bit of a balance with what you guys were talking about last time, having it be more inviting while being fair to our client and trying to figure out a way that is a little less invasive. So what we have is glass above the brick line at that three foot line there. So that's really how we added the extra lighting you were talking about last time. And then, yeah, just touching on the roof shingle sample again, so you guys were able to take a look at that onsite. So I think that's all I really have for the punch list. I don't know if you want me to go through materials a little further, but there. So thank you for your time.
Excuse me, just to step in, can you please describe a little bit more about the door in what you're proposing?
Sorry, could you say that again? Just a little more about what we're proposing.
Yeah, you know, when you zoom in, I just want to make sure and clarify where the window panes will start. Obviously, it's above the brick and you're using the brick right now, as I would say, plus the concrete as a sill for that window. But could you just kind of draw, maybe kind of point to the areas which will be glass surrounding the doorway, please?
And Pete, would it help if they put the rendering from the last meeting to show it side by side so we can see the difference?
That'd be great. I agree. Is there a comparison?
Like from last meeting, if the rendering that you had, if you show side by side?
You couldn't, in the last meeting, that was part of the issue, I think, because you couldn't see the door. So there was no, we couldn't tell, right?
Exactly. But yeah, essentially, in the last meeting, we just had the door that my cursor is on now and the glass pane above. So there was no glass here or here. And the intent is to have that symmetrical on the other side. So there would be glass here where my cursor is and here, so.
And on the other side as well?
Yeah, each side would have the glass. So it'd be more or less a side light on each side.
Got it. And that would just be transparent, normal glass like any other window on the building?
Exactly. And then just continuing with the character of the paneling, the white paneling we have on the front. So we just extended that out to have that be pretty much, you know, how it would be with the paneling and the glass light there, so. Hopefully that makes sense.
Does any board members have any further questions on the front door?
No.
Thank you for zooming in there and for laying that out. Appreciate it.
Though it's hard to tell, we're confirming that that's all transparent glass around the door and all the panes, correct?
Yes.
And the space of the glass from the left side light to the right side light is approximating the size of the lobby as you would walk into the building?
Well, that's really the commercial entry point. So whether they need a vestibule for that space or what they want to do, I think that'll be determined later on, the actual lobby for the apartment.
I use lobby, but I meant vestibule for commercial. So sorry, just me not using the right word. Yeah, I understand. The residential entrance is around the other side, on the driveway side. Yep.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, the intent would be to have that as part of the vestibule space there, so.
And then the next, one of the next items we talked about was the roof color. Can you just kind of go and describe the roof color and what the difference between the two proposed colors were in the two samples? I believe the two sample colors were silver birch and then birch wood, birch wood being the lighter. And then obviously I would open it up to any Planning Board Members' questions or concerns of maybe questions about how we came to those two colors.
Sorry, I'm just trying to zoom in here again. So I talked a little bit with our client about this. I think the lighter version that was being looked at had a little less variation. I think what we're showing here in the rendering and what was approved has a bit of variation as you could see when I zoomed in. So that's really what we're looking at for the coloration of the grays there.
So on the sample, the silver birch looks lighter than the birch wood. Is that, is that what's on the rendering? The silver birch or the birch wood on the rendering?
This would be the darker version.
Oh, okay. So that must be the birch wood, right? That's slightly darker than the silver. Okay.
I think it's important to note that, you know, as we've seen before too, that never in a rendering, I mean, in any rendering, the computer's just not possible duplicating real life conditions, right? So it'd kind of be impossible, even when you, even when you get these shingle files directly from the company and fill them in on the computer, they're never exactly the same. So it's just kind of a general guideline, which is why we like to always look, you know, usually when we're not in times of COVID, that we look at things in person.
But. Sorry to jump in. I think generally, we want to go with what you guys are happy with. So obviously, if you're able to take a look at the two samples and make a decision on it.
I think that's where like another question came in, question from me comes in, that I did go down and look at the samples. I looked at the photographs first that had been sent. And my first impression was, wow, how did we choose these two colors out of all the possible shingle colors available? And then I had, I remembered that there was an earlier version of this building, I think, which was actually the original approved building, which the siding color was blue, right? And I know that got changed afterwards officially. But I feel like, you know, on the original rendering, you know, the siding color was blue, the base was sewn and the, and the shingles were some kind of gray, right? And then when the, when, certainly after I came onboard the Planning Board, I want to say it was one of my first meetings, the color of the siding got changed at a Planning Board Meeting. But I don't recall if we looked at the roof again. I just, I don't remember if it was just the siding. I feel like if we, there would have been more discussion, maybe if we looked at everything, but I don't recall. And so I'm wondering at this point if that, if maybe those grays aren't the right color for this new, the new siding color. So we have the new siding color, it's beige, it's not blue. While the gray went pretty well with the blue, I'm wondering if there's maybe better options for the siding. To me, they both look, maybe not the colors that would be picked. I'd be curious as with your firm as the designers, if that indeed would be the color you would pick or if you, once the color had changed, if you would take another look at that. And if that's something that maybe we should, if we're going to go through the effort of changing the roof color to something, from something that isn't working to something else, we really want to make sure it's the right one for this siding color, for beige versus a medium to dark blue, which is with the original rendering that I have up on my screen, my other screen here. So it's kind of the history, I think, of the shingle color. And then it may not have been reviewed and processed with the change in the siding color.
I believe actually at some point, they, when they changed the siding color, I saw a rendering they had and it was more of a weathered wood color, which has some little bit of tanish in it. It was light, but it had more colors in it than just gray and black and white.
Well, the siding right now is, you know, beige is kind of a warmer color. And so having this kind of light gray, I'm not sure if it's the appropriate choice now for this.
I don't know if you know the different shingle colors, is it called weathered wood or something like that?
Yeah, I think I've seen that one a couple of times myself, actually.
And it just has a little bit more warm brown and brown tan. It's not dark, but it, rather than just gray, looks so plain and black and white.
Yep, I believe that was, trying to see. These are Owen Corning shingles, right?
Yeah, I think Carlos is willing to work with you on any of the samples. So obviously, we'll put up what you want, so.
And I don't think, I mean, it's possible, we could go, we could let you move ahead and then just have to get it okay before you change the color of the shingle so we don't hold the whole thing up maybe, right? Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think that shingle color can be a separate decision. So like you said, we don't hold it up.
I agree with Trish that the color doesn't really go with the colors on the building, that gray and it's kind of like black and white almost to me. The roof is black and white and then there's some color in the building. I think it would be good to look at some other options.
Do you guys want Dan to present some options to you? Do you have, I know you mentioned one already, do you have a specific color in mind?
The ones, I'm trying to find the.
Original drawing, what's on that one? I know it's blue and it doesn't go, but I don't think it was a black and white or a gray and white. I think it had a little bit of.
Yeah. I just pulled up the original rendering with the beige. I know Dale, you can't see, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, it's a much warmer color, I think, to Trish's point, right?
Move forward and we'll.
What's the color you had mentioned, Dale?
Weathered wood.
Weathered wood, yeah. And there was another one.
That warmer kind of browner tile that you would have looked at today.
Yeah.
And I hate to say brown because it's not dark. It's still light and it almost has like almost a little tint twit of like some green and bluish in it, but it just has a little more color to it.
Has some speckles.
And it's still, but it's light, it's still light, but it's not just black and white.
Yeah, it's kind of in the middle between that black and these light grays. You know, it's kind of a middle, a middle tone.
But anyway, I think we should, we can move on to the rest of the stuff and then have, like you said, have just a separate issue with the roof before they change it. You know, we can, you know, okay, or do whatever on the rest of the issues and then they can come back to get the roof color, kind of like what we did with the siding.
Yeah, maybe we can get a few others of these sample boards for the manufacturer and, you know, let us take a look and give you a couple colors that we would like to see out there. And if you have any to add in, if the design firm has any to add in that you think we should take a look at, then, you know, add them in as well. You know, so that we can finalize, you know, finalize the color of the roof.
So you want Pete, keep going down the list?
Yes, please. Dan, do you want to keep on rolling after the roof color?
We went over the dormer.
We went over the dormers, went over the metal roof on the top. The trim and the paneling, obviously that is going to be removed. In this case, we are putting white cutters on. Looking at my note, you know, we have the glass front, the front door. I think that's, I think that was already talked about. I just, Dan, I just don't know how many more, you know, what are the changes were made?
Well, looking at the drawings, I looked at the drawings and the drawings looked good to me. The color of the roof was the only thing I was, you know, that might be in the question for me. But looking at the way, as long as you can build it this time, the way it's drawn and on that drawing, for me, it's looking good.
I think the one other question for me that's out there, that has been a question and that I do not think is addressed in any of this, is that we had talked about the, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we had talked about the overhang on the side dormer roofs.
It looked like in the drawing.
I'm sorry?
It looked to me, I don't have it here now, but I think it looked like they shortened them.
I mean, I guess, I guess that's a question. I mean, when I was out there today, you know, the dormer, the dormer's on the side because the wall itself is not put in the proper place. So the eve depth is twice, on the sides, it's twice what it is on the front, which is what gives it, those dormers kind of that odd appearance.
Can you bring up the dormers on the picture there? Because I think they made them shorter, I think.
Looks shorter.
Just zoom on my screen. So we did address that. And, you know, the intent was to pretty much match the overhang that you see from the front, so.
So that's what ended up making the dormers a little bit smaller, right? But that still looked good to me.
Yeah, really what we did was we pulled in the roof and, you know, as you could see, there's a little bit of a lip. I don't know if you could see my screen right now, but.
We can.
Okay. Where my cursor is, there's a little bit of a bump out here where the metal roof is and we just don't have it there just because we want to keep the overall look of the metal roof. So what we did to address that was.
So.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I think aesthetically, that makes the most sense for it. But go ahead, Joe.
So just to, so first of all, I do think that having the eaves and that metal, I think it definitely visually helps it, you know, a lot. But just to understand what this drawing, so if this drawing is ultimately what was approved, what would happen is you're saying you literally are bringing, you're going to rip those windows out and bring those eaves out some amount of distance and then rebuild the eve and reinstall the window? Is that what, is that what's happening to make, to deliver what we see in the picture?
No. So we're going to keep the windows and the wall in the same place. We're going to rip off the dormer roof and pull it back so there's less of an overhang.
Got it. You're literally going to bring the roof back from where the window sits?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. And then you're going to put that eve on top of the dormer window where it sits presently? Yes, you know, sorry, that's, it's okay. I'm good.
So I'm not sure. So the eve depth, is the eve depth, I'm not sure they should be equal because you're not, you're running out of depth, obviously, to get that metal roof in without it being basically wallpapered on. I get that. So, but what is your plan? Is your plan to bring that eve in to, to match the front or to match the front plus 50%? What dimension do you think that is?
But you, can you, does he have the drawing up? I mean, the rendering's up? Because I think what we need to do is look at it and how you have it on the drawing. If that looks good, they'll figure out how to do it. But it just needs to look like it does on there, if that looks good. I mean, if there's something about it that somebody thinks doesn't look good, you can address that. But I think the technical part of how they're going to do it is as long as they achieve what looks like on the rendering. I don't, to me, it seems like that would be up to them to figure that out if they have to move the roof or the dormer or the window as long as it ends up looking like the rendering that they're presenting.
Yeah, it's just hard, Dale, because the rendering is taken from a certain point of view and it might look great from that point of view. And then you switch views and then you realize how deep these, these eaves are that you don't see from this exact point of view. So that's why I'm wondering if the, if the eaves, we like the eaves on front and currently those eaves on front are half the depth of the ones on the side. So my question is, are the eaves on the side actually being changed? They're less deep now or they will be less deep? And if so, by how much? Like I don't, I'm not sure they can get as small as on the front because I think, as Dan was kind of saying, you kind of run out of space just to get that metal roof in there. It becomes like, that you're basically painting it on a vertical wall. So that when I look at this rendering, it looks like the eaves on the side are still deeper than the eaves on the front. And so I'm wondering if they have been changed, you know, or not. And I mean, it might be a choice between having the metal roof look right on a deeper eve or having the eve look right and not the metal roof. So I still find it a little hard to read in one, in a single rendering. So that's why I'm wondering what the answer is. What are they, what are you showing here?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think from the previous rendering, you know, it looked pretty out of place in terms of the depth of the eve and the soffit. So, you know, I talked with Carlos about that and we addressed it. So I want to say, give me a dimension of 10 inches and, you know, for, for what we're looking at here, I think that's pretty reasonable. And, you know, to me, it won't look out of place when we go with a dimension like that.
Can Carlos give you the dimension of what it is right now? Because I'm betting it's not far off that. Just can Carlos give you the dimension of what it is right now? Because I'm betting it's not far off that.
On what it was? I mean, how much difference from the dimension it was and what it is gonna be?
That's what I'm asking. Someone should know the dimension of what the front eve is, go up there and put a ruler out the window. And someone should be able to tell what the side ones are. Put a ruler out the window, you know, it's not, it's not rocket science. Um so now we don't know what those eve dimensions are. So I'm I I you know, I just like to, I I'm not uh I'm I'm not convinced by seeing one perspective. Perspectives look different when you walk around. Um so I just don't know, I just wondering about what what is the dimension? What is the information? So we might not have it at this time. I like that the curved roof are are is going on. I like that we're putting the detail back in. But I think we need to know if we're if we're voting to agree on something, we kind of need to know what what we're agreeing on. Like inches, you know, not just a picture.
From what I looked at, remember on the drawing, when I looked at them, it just looked better to me. It just, it didn't look out of place the way they have them.
Another drawing, you did you receive these renderings? Was there another drawing that you received?
No, the rendering, that's what I meant. That they gave us that shows that all the different sides. It just the other, the ones that are up there now look ridiculous and the ones when they put that metal roof on it and changed it. And it looks like it's they they cut them back somewhat. And to me, it looks, to me, it looks okay, but
Is that an actual photo or is that a rendering?
Uh so this is is one of the older renderings we produced. Um you know, just just looking at those side eaves. Um I would say that's over a foot right now. So just to give you a little perspective on what the difference is between in that and um what I just the latest submission, so.
Yeah. Could you put those side by side for a second, just so we can see?
Uh see if I can do that. Give me one sec.
Sorry, Trish, go ahead, apologies.
No, that's just, I mean, it's just um, it's just, they do look, they do look at looking at that picture and looking at um the new the new rendering. It does look like they have come in.
So you're you're telling, just just to be clear, what you're saying is gonna happen, and I'm gonna try to draw here, let me know if you can see it. You're saying you're literally gonna physically change this, pull this roof line back? Is that what you're saying? You're literally, when you you're gonna pull the shingles off and you're literally gonna change that? Is that is that the, how you're gonna have the room to do those new eaves?
N- no, no, they're taking off the on the drawing you just drew on, Joe, they're looking at taking off the current dormer that with that's hanging out there too far with the big eve.
Yeah, that's over there, yep.
That's right, and rebuilding that so that it it the eve doesn't stick out as much.
Yeah.
So you're just rebuilding the little roofs, not the big roof.
Uh uh thank you. Okay, I'm 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 comprehending better. So I mean, those things stick out like those things are like, those are huge, uh looking at these, I I mean, yeah. Go ahead, Trish, sorry.
Yeah, no, so it it does look like it was reduced. I'm just, just after all this time, I just wish we had real numbers, you know, I just, we just we do renew what the number was instead of always just looking at these pictures.
Yeah, I'll just say again, the overall intent is to make it looks look like it fits in. We don't want to make it look like it sticks out. I think that was the reason or one of the reasons for the comment before about the overhang. So we want to make sure we address that and make it look better in that sense.
And while and while we're zoomed in, this eve right here that I'm circling in blue over the air air vents soffits, I I'm not sure what the right term is, th- those are gonna be identical materials and everything to that, just on a smaller scale, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Well, just for from my point of view, the when I looked at the rendering, it just looked a lot nicer. I mean, it looked looked nice. I try to look at it as a fresh, you know, not compare the old old one, but just look at it, you walked up and this first time you saw the building. And it just with the the new rendering, it looked nice to me.
Yeah, I agree. I I definitely think it's better. I would just request that along with the new shingle style that there is some record that that we are provided with that the front dormer eve is a certain width. That the existing side dormer eve is a certain depth, I should say, is a certain depth. And the new dormer eve is going to be a certain depth. Because once those are gone, we have no, we have no record of what they were and what the change we agreed upon was. It's just all visual, you know.
Yeah, you know, if the board would like, we could perform specific construction control for that item to make sure it's achieved properly.
Yeah, you could do that. You could rebuild one of them and then we could okay it. Or have Pete look at it or some. I don't know, I I I I would like to, you know, be able for you guys to move on. I just thought it looked nice the way the new one is, isn't it? And and so somehow you have to put, I know what you're saying, we have to have some language or something in there so that they yeah, it looks nice in the drawing and then they rebuild and they still look like they're sticking out a mile. Then that's not good either. So I I understand that. It'd be nice if we had some measurements like yeah, it is like now they're sixteen inches and they're gonna be eight or something like that. And it would be like, you know, that's a normal overhang.
Um I mean, how could we, I mean, like, that's something that could be, in terms of measuring the existing and getting where they are now to be able to put it into this, I mean, that could be done tomorrow, right? That's not a hard thing to do. And then I guess the only question is, is like uh I mean, in theory, we could, how could we, how could we um how could we achieve this, Peter, technically, such that we could, the shingle collar would be, you know, things can move forward except for the shingle collar. And this eve issue could be addressed and kind of finalized in the next like forty-eight hours, like, how how do we, how were we able to move that forward? But be able to get actual dimensions and stuff off the physical building to be able to do, make that decision?
Well, the way I look at this is what we, I think we can all agree that everything from the roof line down, from the gutter line down, the plan, the board is accepting of, right? We're accepting of the panels being removed, uh we're accepting of the front door uh being changed. Uh we're accepting of the trim work in 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 the gutters. Everything that we have questions on are pretty much the gutter line and above, which is concerning the color of the roof shingles and the angle of the overhang and the distance of, excuse me, of the dormers. Um so I think, you know, we can do one thing is we can approve we can allow Carlos and the project to move forward in regards to everything from the gutter line down. And then, uh you know, with additional information submitted which were regarding the dormers and the roof color, we could therefore make a decision on that. But as information comes into me, uh I can therefore send it out to the planning board and if you guys or the all night guys, I'm sorry, if all plenty were members uh are accepting of the changes or the color um we can move forward. You know, the one thing I do not want to get into and I don't think anybody wants to get into is a public hearing, well, is an open meeting law violation. We're not able to converse about this by email, right? So however, if you would like to review the rendering and then send me back your opinion, I can therefore share those with Dan, the architect, um and Phil in the in the applicant. What I can't do is start sending emails back and forth to each other. So I think we can do one, one option would be to approve everything gutter lot from the gutter down and then hold off on everything from the gutter up until the next planning board meeting where we can discuss dormer angles and door in in the length of the dormers. And then we can therefore receive additional color samples for the roof shingles.
And information, measurements and stuff like that about what they're gonna end up, what size of the dormer and what roofs are gonna be.
Yeah. I was just trying to look at the construction. I have the construction drawings, but I can't. I'm trying to look at the construction drawings right now to see
I mean, isn't part of our issue that the construction draw, the construction drawings were in line and consistent with what will be approved? The problem is, is isn't the physical building built different than the construction drawings?
That that's right. When I when I reviewed them and I I can't guarantee that I looked at every single detail, but the the um the construction drawings, to me, look to be in line with the approved renderings, that the architects submitted drawings that were in line with the approved renderings. And it seemed like the changes happened in construction. So and that's why I'm just wondering, I I just would be I I when we're when we're going this far and we don't want to redo it another time, I'd rather know what the dimensions are. I'd rather have something real that we can say hey, the front, the front eaves are six inches. The 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 eaves on the sides are currently fourteen inches and we're bringing them down to ten inches, like that we know what we're getting is is, you know, versus relying on a pretty picture, which I I think could get us into trouble again. I'm I'm very hesitant to do that.
I understand.
So Tricia, are you?
Are you good with the gutter down stuff?
I am, I am, yep.
That's what I'm saying. So that might be a good option if it's if it's okay with everybody that we approve that so they can at least be working on that and get rid of all of that stuff. And then
Yeah, and I'm good in general with the way this looks, you know, except for relooking at the shingle color and making sure we put the right color up there. I'm just hesitant to do it without real data, you know.
Yeah, I I I think it, I I I'm okay with this approach, too. I think it's prudent. I think it makes sense. Um, yeah.
And then 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 they can get get the color thing in the next couple of weeks before the next meeting should be time for we can they can get more samples. We can look at them. They can send us the samples. They can measure the dormers and say how much of a difference it's gonna be and you know, so and then at the next meeting, we should be able to do from the gutter up.
Okay, um or is our um I guess, um are we gonna walk through, well, I guess are there any, Dale, or any other things on the renderings that we've looked at that you want to specifically talk about or or anybody else?
Well, no, I was I was, because I'm trying to approach it as, you know, it's a fresh building. I don't want to keep going back to the, we're comparing it to the other one because it will never be exactly like that.
Yeah.
And it's, when it came out was just, I looked at it and I didn't think, oh, that's that's disgusting. That's like, what is that? What, you know what I mean? I looked at it and said, that looks nice, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The changes that they're making and you know, and it's sad, it's always sad to happen. It would have still been like the first rendering, you you know, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be here, but it's it's looking good and I'm I'm just looking at it with fresh, you know, perspective, so to me, it's just the the color change. The only thing I didn't like was the shingles on that. The shingle color was too black and white. It'd be nice if there were a little color in there because the the siding is really light, everything's in, then you put and you have cans and stuff and then you just put black and white shingles on it, kind of. I didn't really like that.
Yeah, yeah. So um could we just throw up the rendering from the other side of the building? I believe you gave us three sides, um Dan. So could you put up the San Tander Bank side view, just just for thoroughness of saying we looked at all of them and during the meeting and can see that?
Um can I just say one very quick one? Um it looks like to go through some major changes, but I feel like when you change your shi- your shingle color, I mean, your roof shingle color again, I'm guessing you're gonna still see some other differences that you probably were not noticing now because of the cool and warm thing that's going on. So I wonder if we should like take one quick stab at choosing that shingle color before trying to change, do major changes to the roof itself, because I have a feeling that once you start changing the shingle color from the cool to the warmer to work with the siding, I'm, I have a feeling that you're gonna see some more pronounced architecture that is kind of now is kind of not there.
Yeah.
You mean perhaps that because the color of the metal
Yeah.
might blend blend in with the gray right now and it might start to stand out more?
Yeah, because yeah, when you said Trisha, I think, and now I understand the story behind it, but I felt like that is a really thing that cool and warm thing is also making that pronounced this one about how that's dormer is coming out, so maybe I don't know if it's something that we should take a stab at choosing the color to make sure that that works and maybe that'll help with making a call on that depth as well. Just my gut reaction on that.
I think I think that's good. I think we should pay attention to the roof color in relation also to the metal color. Because those things have to work together as well. And the metal color isn't up there yet, you know, obviously, so we have some the metal's already on the bottom floor, but it's on the top.
If I could just jump in, uh you know, I think it makes sense to look at the metal color as well. Um Carlos did send me a picture yesterday. Um you know, I think the intent is to match the metal on the bay windows. And what he sent, I could pull it up, was, you know, it's, it looks pretty dark here and I you know, I think that's what's on um the bay windows, but um I think that's something we can
Well, so that, so 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 Dan, I mean, this concerns, this like this raises my, this raises my concern a little bit, right? Because the in the rendering we're looking at, like the those eaves are clearly not black. Um and that appears to be a metal surface there.
Yeah, I, again, I just got sent this yesterday, so um I didn't really talk about it.
Yeah, but no, I get it, but I just go ahead, Dan, and then I'll say my thing.
So I I just want to bring that to your attention, too, and you know, obviously, we want to work with you guys to make it look right, so um you know, maybe the same thing with the shingle color as we do with the the metal roof color.
Yeah, and I looked at, just looking at the original rendering, it they the dormers look nice because they're like almost that really light bronzy look cop, not copper, but just, they're not dark at all.
I mean, I I I think if it, I think if we just step, I I think stepping back like big picture, if we're if we're looking at the shingles, we're taking this gutter line and up gutter line and down approach to it, like if the shingle colors change, you know, I mean, maybe we, maybe we defer the metal finish on these to that point, too, so that it all, we have the capability to make it all tie. Just because at the end of the day, you know, my approach with this is if this is what we approve tonight, then that's the metal that's going up there. Right? Like that, like this is a very literal approval, like it must be exactly on this rendering what you do. I I think, right, so um
All the little dormer metal things need to be tied in with the roof color.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Complement each other and they don't, you know.
Uh I think it makes sense to take a look at what the approval is for the shingle color and go from there and look at the the metal see how they complement each other, like you said, so um
It is really hard.
Think it could be.
It's hard because on the renderings is never an exact color and if you look at the samples, even if you pull them up next to the building, looking at a two-foot square sample, doesn't give you the same perspective as seeing the whole roof. So it's it's kind of hard to do that, but luckily, there's there's a range of colors that should work. It's just, you just have to try to get some kind of rendering that's as close as possible to what real colors are gonna be.
Well, I think if we can get, I mean, the normal thing to do, like I said, the rendering is 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 just never gonna match and it's gonna look different on different people's screens. It's gonna look different when you print it out in different places. So I know there's a whole pile of Hardy Board or whatever it is um that went up on the sides here on the back of that building. So we, there is, there's some sample of the side So there is, there's some sample of the siding right there. Samples of shingles are very easy to come by. Companies love to give those away. Um, and then there should be samples of that metal roof color so that we can actually, you know, we might have to go to town hall to actually see them versus, you know, being, being able to bring them into a, a planning board meeting, which is usually the easy way to do it. But at least then we can see them, um, for ourselves.
One second, buddy.
So, um, so I, yeah, I would be careful about relying on any rendering. They're never gonna be that great.
Just so that we're clear on the steps here. So do you want Dan to propose electronically some, some shingles, some metal roof colors? Then you guys pick two maybe, and then we'll get the actual samples?
Something like that would be good for me. And going by, just so you have a reference, the, the roof on that original rendering is on the original one. Looks good to me. I, only thing I don't know is, is it gonna look good, you know, what it looks like with the lighter siding. So, just using those same colors for a starting point for me would be the same colors on that original rendering of the roof and the dormers with that light bronzy, the metal look and then, but have the actual color siding in there.
Dan, do you, can you pull that original image up?
I, yeah, I just did. So I'm just circling the, uh, the more bronze colored metal roof up there now.
Dale, is that the, the shingle color though you're, you're, you're talking about as well?
Yeah, that's it. I don't know. It's hard to see on this thing. Almost looks gray, but it's got more colors, like speckly looking rather than just black and white.
Yeah, I think, I think the shingle colors that we're probably interested in are either driftwood or weathered wood. Those are two other samples that are on the same boards as these gray samples. Both of them have a little bit of brown in that would go more with that brown, bronzy type roof up there. So one of those might be a better fit for what we're doing. But I think as Deepa said, it's, it's looking at all these, is looking at the things together to see where we are. The shingle color, the roof color and the metal roof color. And I think we need, we need samples of those in real life. Which is just the normal way to do it before electronics.
Okay.
But if, um, you know, if Dan and the design team there has, you know, a couple, if they have recommendations like, hey, we think the driftwood would look great with this color of metal, then, then that, that helps us that we're not doing all the work. We're just looking at a professional's recommendation. So that would definitely, definitely be helpful.
Dan, can you and Dennis do that? Make a recommendation?
Yeah, absolutely. And is that something that you just want to see samples of or do you want to see it re-rendered?
It'd be nice to have a rendering too, because it gives you a whole overall look and then you can look and see how close the samples are to real, the rendering.
Yeah, again, I just say, obviously the rendering's not perfect, so, um, yeah.
The rendering's usually helpful to, to get it in the right neighborhood. It's just not good to rely on a hundred percent.
And I think it worked out great if I can step in that, that, you know, that the, um, samples were dropped off. I was able to pick those up. I can email the planning board and the members of the planning board can, can obviously come into the town hall. And, you know, walk over to the building if that's appropriate to, to kind of get a firsthand look. And then, and then make a decision. But, um, speaking to Phil and to Dan, I would like to move forward and let Carlos continue to work from the gutter line down if that's appropriate. And if the planning board could make action or take action tonight, which would allow Carlos to continue the construction project, uh, to get closer to the, uh, the finished line.
I would just say, if we put in whatever decision we made on that would be, I would want to say, you know, if we're using the gutter line down and be what we approved tonight, the gutter line up, nothing's approved yet.
No, I think just from a, from a point I know is Dale, I would like to just point out that the paneling will be removed. Uh, and the siding will be replaced as identified in the, uh, renderings. Uh, and then also obviously work to the front door, uh, with the implementation of the new rendering of the front door. And then leave off of metal and then the window trim as well. And those would be the three.
To match the front, right?
Correct. That I would put a memorandum together, uh, and then issue that out, uh, almost as a decision from tonight's meeting, uh, which would allow Carlos to move forward, uh, just with those three items, the siding, the front door and the trim.
So, so I, I'm broadly, like, I'm broadly o- okay with that for, for what it's worth. I guess, I'm sorry to raise, I'm sorry to raise another issue, but I just want to circle back really quickly because we just touched on it. To be clear, the, whatever material we end up with on the eaves on the third floor, on the front of the building and the sides of the building is ultimately what we should be doing over those bay windows on the ground floor, I think. Like, so if we're good with what's there, then, I mean, because right now if we do this gutter line and below, every, you know, everything's gonna move forward, right? So that's the only piece below the gutter line that I just want to be very clear about. So what do we think?
I agree. I think that's, I think that's to be determined, you know, if it's good as is, depending on what are, what we choose for the rest.
Okay.
And then on the, um, on the side dormers, it's, so it sounds like the board's okay now. They look aesthetically. And so you're looking for Dan to supply you with build measurements that form to that aesthetic?
Yeah, just to make sure they're built to what, you know, I mean, whatever looks like on there, that's the measurement. So we don't say like, oh, that's twelve inches and then, but the drawing is showing it as it's eight or six. You know what I mean? So it needs to match up so that when we build it and if we approve something, yeah, twelve inches, eight inches is fine. And find out that that even looks funny because it's not, you know, proportionally on the drawing, it, it would be four inches or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's really just a matter of someone with a ladder and opening up a double hung window and measuring it. It's, you know, it's.
But, but the new ones would have to be, you know, some specific.
I mean, let's just, let's just anchor. Like what we're saying is, is, you know, everything from the, from the gutters below, like what we're, what, what we're memorandering tonight is from the gutters below with the exception of the eaves over the bay windows on the ground floors. Like, is that cleaner? Is that clean?
Well, well, why don't, then we probably should just specify what we're okay in the siding and the, around the one like Pete said. Like Pete said, to, um, specify, instead of just saying everything below, specify the things we set, the, the door, redoing of the door, this way the siding is around the windows. And then just leave the roofs of all the dormers and the bay windows and the roof for a later decision.
If I just be concerned that we might inadvertently miss something like the railing. I don't know if the railing's been swapped out yet.
The railing in the, their drawing is swapped out and is consistent, looking at the renderings on all, at least the three sides that we've seen, right?
Yeah, so we're, we'd be approving what the, what's on the rendering.
Yeah, what's in the rendering is what, is what we would, what we would be approving below the gutters, except for the roof, the roof over the.
That, that sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
What I just would like to get back to really, really quickly, just throw that side render up again. I just want to have said we looked at that for just, we, we got, we got sidetracked on something when we looked at that.
Dan, can you throw the third one up?
The San Tander side. I think it's fine. I just wanna. If you just zoom a little bit, please. The railing looks aligned with the, with all other railings that I think we've seen. Is that, is that correct, Dan? The, the render railing is the same as the other render railings?
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. And the, and the material, go ahead, sorry.
Is there a railing on the third floor, on, on the third floor behind the tree?
Yeah, there, there's a, uh, there's a dormer with a slider there. So you have access to the, uh, the Juliet balcony there, so.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out for all board members to see.
And the, and even though we can't see the, even though we can't see the railing, it's consistent as well.
Correct.
Yeah. And the, yeah, okay, I'm gonna leave that alone because we're not. Anything else on the side to everybody else on the board? Buddy, I got it. I got it. There you go. Good night.
It looks like these eaves match up with the ones on the other side. But again, we need to make sure the metal matches the roof shingles once we approve them, right?
Yep. And that's below the gutters. So that's, you know, that will be what we're handling next.
Okay, do you guys take a vote on that or?
I guess one thing I want to say just for completeness, so we don't have a rendering of the rear of the building. But the expectation is the rear of the building is identical to what we're seeing on the other three sides. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, the is to, you know, address a- as the same. So, you know, address the paneling, replace it with the siding. The dormers, there are dormers on the back. They will be addressed like the side dormers.
Yeah, we'll talk about those for our next, right? Yep. Everybody okay with all that?
Yeah.
Well, how are we gonna word this, Pete?
Could be very interesting, Dale. You know.
Gonna get the Mark Clean Literature Award for this.
Yeah, exactly.
Make sure we cover everything, yeah.
And not from this guy. Uh, I think the number one thing is to, to point out in a motion made by the planning board is that the applicant shall remove, uh, the current paneling on the rear and left side of the building and replace them with, uh, the approved tri- I mean, the approved siding as represented on the, uh, submitted renderings, uh, which would be the continuation of clapboard siding. Uh, and then also the, um, change of the front door, uh, as represented on the renderings with the implementation of, uh, I would say glass paneling around the existing, uh, well, around the door frame. And then also the implementation of, uh, window trim or trim surrounding all windows uh, to make all windows corresponded with each other. With the exclusion, this approval will exclude the metal roof, which is currently above the, uh, three bay windows on the front of, front first floor, uh, of the existing structure. I think so. Any motion upon those lines, I think would be appropriate. If anybody has anything else to add or for clarification purposes, please, please do so.
So to, there's a way to simplify that would be just a hundred percent siding, no panel. Right? The, the, all sides will just have siding without any decorative panels.
I got an even easier way. Can you just, can the motion be that the, the planning board approves the developer to make, to modify the building from the gutter line down to make it consistent with the renderings provided, cite the three re- renderings, with the exception of the covering on the three bay, on the bay windows in the front of the property, which will be discussed at a later point.
Yeah, that's pretty simple.
For the rendering, say like, like, then it's just a picture. Like, give us the picture. Here's the picture. We would like you to go forward with providing to build to this picture from the gutter down. The only exception is the bay windows and we will address gutter line up at a later meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good. As long as we, 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 we know exactly what renderings were. So many renderings lately that we gotta make sure that we get the right one.
Town website.
Yep. Can I just speak real quick, Dean? Can you please put this, the three renderings that you submitted on a, on a, on, on a sheet that would explain the, um, the address, the project and also give a date? Uh, so then I could, we could reference them within a memo, memorandum?
Yeah. Give them the number, these ones that we're looking at that they gave us today. That have some kind of a reference number on them so that they, we know what's.
Sorry, could you just say that one more time? So do you want the three renderings with the date?
A date with the address. The applicant.
The address.
Really with a whole, with, I would, with a professional title block.
Okay.
And Dale, before we move forward, uh, I just want to make note that we should also just, uh, see if there's any public comment via Zoom. I see there's a couple of members here, a couple of citizens on the meeting that may, may, uh, may, may would like to add some, uh, I just want to open up for public comment.
Okay. It's not a public hearing, but we can open it up and let them talk. Let them just add anything.
If anybody's interested in speaking, I would say please raise your hand or, or unmute yourself, uh, at this kind of time.
Somebody, nine, five, one number. Are you, are you trying to speak?
That's Dale.
Oh, sorry.
That's me. I'm trying to speak.
Yeah, Dale, no, there was video action, so I think we can move forward and, and put a little.
I just have one other, one really quick other question. Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, there.
Yeah, I have one other quick question. Is there some reason that the downspouts for the gutters are a foot off the corner? So that it makes a giant gutter line going down or they, can they put, put in front of the corner trim? Just to, you know? If I'm talking to the.
I think I can just, no, just. The corner trim.
It does kind of look like they stick out because usually you try to hide them and, you know, blend them in with the trim and stuff. There's, the one, it looks like the one on the far side is up against the corner. But the two in the middle look like they're just like random lines coming down. I mean, I don't know if that's because technically they had to end up somewhere or something, but it seems like if you could just put those on the corner, it would kind of dip up here a little bit. Just an observation.
Yeah, talked to Carlos about that and we, we want to make sure we do exactly what you're saying. So they'll go along the corner trim.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it just seems like, it seems like it would look nicer if it blended in a little bit more.
Yeah, we just had to address it on the rendering.
Okay, so that's it. I guess no one public is speaking, so. Okay, so that's it. I guess no one public is speaking, so. Move forward with a motion, I guess. And do I have to come up with something or Joe did pretty good?
Uh, yeah, I could, I think we could take Joe's motion.
Do you want me to try again? Say it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, I make a motion that the planning board, um, allow the developer to modify the existing structure at 128 Main from the gutter line of the building to the ground of the building and make it consistent with the three renderings provided for tonight's meeting. Uh, the, uh, the only exceptions are that the, uh, material, the roofing material above the bay windows on the ground floor will be finalized and revised at a later date. And the gutter on the, uh, far right corner of the building will be aligned with the corner of the building. Um, and we'll say, and further, the planning board intends to discuss all issues from the gutter line to the roof line at a later meeting.
Well, I'll second that. All in favor? Roll call.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye. That passed. Is that everybody?
I think.
Yep.
Deepa, I think she's on mute.
Deepa Venkata, aye.
Okay, then that passes five, zero, zero.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Phil. I'm gonna draft up a memo, uh, but it would be great, Dean, if I could get those, you know, on the title block. And then, uh, we can move forward with the other elements next week.
Sounds good. Thanks, everybody.
You guys, you, you, you guys know what we need for the next meeting, right?
Dan?
Yeah, I have that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, when's your next meeting?
Uh, the next meeting is going to be on September 10th.
Do we need, you want to put them on there?
Uh, yes, I would like to put them on.
Okay.
We, uh, we don't have to announce that or anything, right? It's a long thing. Set a time.
Uh, I would say seven fifteen at, uh, on September 10th.
Is that good with everybody?
That works, that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. This is tough being on it and doing this from the phone. You don't realize how much you rely on the technology.
Dale, if you haven't figured out, the internet is back.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Well, at this point, at this point, you know, I'm just gonna finish it up on the phone. Because I'll probably log off, try to log on, something will happen, I'll be gone for good.
No, makes sense.
So, because I think really what we have left is the minutes, right?
We just have the minutes, correct.
Let's just do that and then call it a night.
Okay.
Does everybody need some time on those or? No, yes, has everybody, anybody read them?
Can, can we have a, like, a couple of minutes for them?
Or, anything for you, Joe.
Well, don't do it for me.
I, I had just a couple notes, um, and maybe I'm just not remembering or maybe it's not clear. On lines fourteen, fifteen, it says, Mr. Chen reviewed the changes to the front of the building such as adding a curved mansard roof and centering the entry door. I thought, weren't those? I thought they had those on there the whole, did they, had they taken off the curved mansard roof?
They, they removed, like, they, after we approved the drawings in their final, a- a- as-built plan, they took it out.
Oh, they did take it out? Okay.
Well, in the, in the renderings anyway.
In the construction, yeah.
I was trying to remember that if, it's, it seemed like there, there was no big discussion, like, yeah, we'll put it back in. So I, I didn't remember it being, uh, trying to find my list where I made those notes. And this, and centering the entry door, was that not? That might note here somewhere.
Is that for Pond Street or?
Yeah, uh, yeah, for Pond Street.
Yeah, I think there was a mention about those doors. Because right now, they're on, they were off to the side or something. They wanted to put them in between the windows.
Oh, yeah, maybe it, maybe that's what they meant. That, and that was true, that they, that they were kind of not centered in that way. Maybe it was just, um, maybe centering the two diff- multiple entry doors.
I, I, I agree. That's what it was.
That might have been what they meant.
So we just have July 23rd, right? That's what we're looking at right now for the season?
That's it.
Okay.
While everyone's reading the minutes, I'm just gonna kind of give everyone the heads up that at the next meeting is going to be the public hearing for the sa- of the Public Safety Building, uh, on September 10th. So, uh, Emma, I believe, uploaded all the documents in the application. Uh, they're going for a site plan approval and they're also going for two, I believe they need two special permits. Uh, one for grading, uh, concerning site alteration. And, uh, and those are the big, that, that's going to be the big public hearing, uh, on the 10th. Uh, so, you know, a- as plans are being reviewed, please let me know and, and I, I'm more than happy to kind of answer any questions or concerns.
Yeah.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I did find my notes. So, yeah, that is, I think, what they meant, that there's the, um, the different storefront windows for the commercial entries. The glass was, the doors weren't centered in the glass on, I think there were two, at least two occasions and they were going to correct that, so.
And Pete, do we have to, uh, sign anything for that, 128?
Um, you know what, Dale, um, I can write a, I, I, I'm just gonna write up a memorandum and then I, I would say, yeah, I would say, I would ask you just to come in and sign it, so, uh, to make it a little bit, you know, to make it official. I think is the best bet.
Keep us in the loop.
Okay. I, I'll probably send something out next Monday or Tuesday and then, um, and then we'll keep everything kind of moving forward. Uh, and, and Dale, I would ask you as the chairman just to come in and sign the document and then I can kind of, at least I can file that with the town cleric and, and go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will do. Everybody good with the minute?
Um, did, didn't we, um, did, and during the reorganization in, on the 23rd, didn't we also make a couple of other, the smaller appointments, um, at that point of time as well? I thought those appear to be missing from the minutes. We've got Tricia's clerk, me as vice chair, Dale as chair, but then there was this, I was, you guys reappointed me on the CPC and there were a couple of other decisions that don't appear in the minutes, I think.
I thought that was at a later meeting.
Later meeting. That was at a later meeting.
Got it. Thanks, guys. Okay. Yep.
I think we appointed and we talked about other physicians during this meeting.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Got it. Okay. I think, I think I'm good.
Is everybody okay?
Yes.
Entertain a motion to approve the July 23rd, 2020 minute?
I second that.
Someone's got to move it first.
So moved.
Who's in second?
All in favor, do a roll call.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Deepa Venkata, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye. That passes five, zero, zero.
Okay.
Anything else anyone wants to say before we just end this fiasco?
I've never heard the meeting called a fiasco before.
It, it technically, it wasn't, the meeting was a good meeting. It's just technically with all the glitches and everything. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. It wasn't, it was a good meeting.
I make a motion to end the fiasco? I make a, I, I make a motion to end the meet, to adjourn the meeting, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Aye. Oh, Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Deepa Venkata, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye. Passes five, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody, and good night.
All right. I'll talk to everybody as it goes forward.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
End of the fiasco.